Would you all please rise and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. This is Monday, December 10th, 2018. It is our regularly scheduled town council meeting. All members of council, except for Mr. O'Rourke, are present this evening. And Mr. Kellogg is also present this evening. We have a presentation this evening, but before we get to that, I'm just gonna ask for your patience and indulge me just getting through a few items of business before we jump into that presentation. So quickly, the consent calendar. Any comments or questions, objections relative to the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar. Communications, we have A through K. I just ask that be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on the communications on item number I?
Sure.
Can I ask a question about it?
Sure.
We submitted it on November 29th and it was due on the 26th. Just my-- that's okay, right, Mr. Kellogg?
Yeah, I believe I-- I believe in my cover memo that I-- yeah, if--
Right, the cover memo we approved it on.
Hopefully I did. If I failed to at my pugs, I believe I noticed that-- no, I guess they didn't. I'm sorry. There was a delay based upon OPM. They-- basically several departments asked for additional time based upon limited scheduling. That was approved and authorized, so there was an extension basically granted.
Okay.
So I thought that was incorporated in my cover memo.
Okay.
I see it's not, but it's fine.
Great.
And actually, I'll-- I might be giving you a subsequent update at the next meeting. I'm just trying to finalize. OPM had some additional thoughts on that grant, so I may actually have another update for you at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But nothing detrimental to our--
Anything further? All right, so I asked the communications be incorporated. We're gonna just do three items of new business first. We have the-- actually, I should check myself. Public participation, in case anybody wants to comment before we get to those items. Would anybody like to participate in the first public participation session?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Will you be able to use the second public participation to comment on the FIRE study after we've heard it?
Oh, Mr. Kersh, I love your questions. We always reward you for being so-- such a wonderful public participant, so yes, I will give you that option. Anybody else? Don't tell anybody that, okay? All right, we'll close the first public participation. And I just wanna attack those three items of new business. First is the A, the resolution regarding the 2019 Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule. Mr. Palace, is there a motion?
Yes, as soon as I find it, because I didn't know we were doing a different kind of an order.
Gotta keep you on your toes.
Well, that's fine. Okay, I got it. I will introduce the resolution regarding Wolf Park Fee Schedule and move for its adoption. Resolved that the 2019 Wolf Park Fee Schedule is presented as presented and recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission is hereby approved and to be made effective on July 1st, 2019.
Motion, Mrs. Palace, is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg. I'll let you introduce the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Orros, who's here tonight, provides me with her analysis and recommendations on the park and rec fee schedule to be effective July 1st of 2019. They're working well, well ahead of schedule, which is great. She-- after we discussed that, she further presented it to the Parks and Rec Commission, who had some further conversations and refinement on that. I will ask her to kind of run through the changes that are highlighted and kind of the rationale behind them. I'll just highlight for clarity, so in the far left, you've got the existing fees. If you jump all the way to the 2019 Parks and Rec Commission column, that's what is kind of before you currently. That is the final recommendation out of the Parks and Rec Commission that we are asking that you consider and adopt. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Orros to come and kind of walk you through some of the changes that we do.
Thank you, Ms. Orros. Floor is yours. Sure, wherever you're comfortable.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, does it all have the spreadsheet? So if you look under the 2019 Parks and Recreation Commission fees for the Wolf Park pool, as you can see, we are suggesting a small increase of $65 for residents and $130 for non-residents. And you can look your way down. And this increase in fee for the community is we're going to be possibly offering extra pool time now. So with this small increase in fee, that will accommodate additional lifeguards and mission staff. If you go further down, there's no changes in the daily fees for residents and non-residents. And then another change is replacement tags. Previously, if somebody lost their tag, they'd have to pay a replacement fee. So we dropped that down because we figure not too many people lose it and it doesn't cost that much to replace. And replacement stickers. People who have memberships and if they're a resident, they get a free parking sticker. But sometimes people who are non-resident members, they may lose their parking sticker. So we're gonna add a $5 fee for them to get additional parking sticker. The Lake Zord Boat Ramp has no changes. And, I'm sorry, yes, it does. $5 increment in the fee. Excuse me, I read the wrong line. And that's because we're gonna have staff there more often on the weekends. And also, we're gonna start collecting daily fees right at the lake, because sometimes when people wanna do-- it's very last minute to come to the boat ramp and sometimes the hours at the sales office are not available. Any questions so far? I'm kind of going. Feel free to jump in. Okay, perfect. And then down for our group for the picnics. There's only a slight change. We're trying to get more people to rent the facilities. There's another document, I'm not sure if you have it, that shows the breakdown of how many picnics we do. And there's some dates that, you know, there's times that the park is not available because residents are renting it, but we also wanted to track-- so we lower the fees. And then if you go to the next page, our Mastic Pool. No fees are being charged, no additional fees are being charged, because we don't have any increased rental arrangements with the Board of Ed, so that's gonna stay the same. And then down for Web Mountain Camping. We are gonna go up a little bit because we found out that there's 135 permits that are issued to non-residents and only 25 to residents. And we wanted to keep the upkeep of the park with the porta-potties and camping, so we wanted to pass those fees on to the non-residents and keep our residents using the facility.
Mr. Kellogg?
Chairman, if I may. Thank you, thank you, Ms. See. If I could just highlight one thing. One thing that Ms. See conducted this year, which was a very good move in the right direction, was actually surveying our pool users, those that frequent and those are buying passes. And there was an overwhelming request for additional pool hours, particularly in the morning hours, whereas we currently only open at 12:00 noon. So the intent with this nominal, basically $5 per person increase in the membership fee for the pool is to be able to cover additional hours for at least two days of the week, so we can open at 10:00 a.m. instead. So that's the drive for that. And Ms. See's also done some analysis relative to neighboring towns and feels that we are certainly not an outlier, even with this change that is within the-- you know, it's competitive with other-- and similar to other communities. The other thing I wanted to point out was, you'll note that the Cedar Grove was removed from rental. That is because it's historically a low rented area. And we also wanted to-- Ms. See's also thought to me, which is well received, that we need to have at least one area that's kind of dedicated, that's first come, first served, so that people just without a reservation could come and enjoy the park and bring a picnic and do whatever they want. Even though there's other areas that are not rented, but that's always hit or miss, because you don't know what reservations are there. But at least we could then publish that there's always one location that's always first come, first served. And we're not really losing revenue, because it was--
Two.
Rented two times last year, so. That's the only additional comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Any--
I'd like to just make a comment.
Mr. Palace?
Let's just say November 15th and on to the date. Mrs. Martin and I met with Mrs. Orros to discuss the whole fee schedule and was very comprehensive and, you know, good job.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Condon?
So this is for the Rotary Pavilion? What are the other places that are rented?
We have the Rotary Pavilion, the Pondview, the Lake Pavilion, and Oak Grove. And then Cedar Grove is the one we were considering taking off, because it's right when you come up through Wolf Park down at the Great Hall Lakes side. There's like 15 tables. And a lot of people use that for when they get off the bike trail and hiking. So it was great to just have a spot if you decide last minute to-- you need a rest or you just wanna, you know, have a quick last minute sandwich. And this way, a spot that no one has to fight over.
Thank you.
Anybody else? One question I have is, when I was on Parks and Rec years, decades ago, it feels like, it-- I don't remember ever having an opening for any of the facilities rentals. In other words, they were constantly booked. And it was kind of a rush to get them booked. What do you attribute, if you know, because I know you're new, what do you attribute the lack of interest to?
In the Cedar Grove one, or the other facilities?
I don't know. You mentioned that you tried to reduce the facilities. It doesn't seem like it differentiates between the various facilities. So the comment was, you reduced the fees because you were trying to increase use.
Yeah, to get people in the park more. We noticed this summer our numbers were down from the 2017 reservation. It could be just people's ability with their schedules, people going other venues, which we gotta figure out to track them back to come to Wolf Park.
Okay.
So we're working on that.
So we don't really know?
No, another survey's gonna be going out soon. But a lot of it, we just felt the fee was way too high compared to some of the other places I called that have rentals.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. B is our resolution regarding the fiscal year 2019 WMNR grant for-- from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. Mr. Palace?
I will introduce the following agreement, 2019 WMNR CPB Grant Agreement and Move for its Adoption. Resolved that the 2019 Radio Community Service Grant Agreement and Certification of Eligibility, dated October 1st, 2018, binding between the Corporation for Public Broadcasting and the Town of Monroe and WMNR-FM are hereby approved and that the First Selectman and General Manager WMNR-FM are authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the Town of Monroe as licensee and WMNR-FM as grantee respectively.
Motion by Ms. LaPellis by way of resolution. Second by Mr. Condon. For discussion, I'll again turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Lito. So this is a grant that comes up every year. So it's nothing dramatically new this year, other than there's a slight decrease in the amount of the grant. But as you all know, WMNR kind of works separate from our general fund and it's a special revenue fund. And they clearly can-- they indicate they can certainly make do with their fundraising efforts, despite that slight reduction. And there's no impact relative to matching grants, anything else. There is one change this year relative to increased training required of the WMNR staff, but that requirement can easily be accommodated. It has been reviewed by the town attorney, who has provided his memo. And other than that, I would turn the floor over to our General Manager of WMNR, Cory Anderson, who's here, if you have any other further questions or if he'd like to elaborate any further in regards to the grant.
Mr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Every year, well, every second or third year, they manage to add a little something more to the grant. But that's all right. There's accountability. We have to publish on the WMNR website our audited financial statement and a number of other things. And in fact, your all names are listed in a sense of transparency. This year, we've also had to make sure that the staff and the paid staff and management had harassment training, which they've all received. The volunteers didn't have to, but we will give them the option of taking it. Other than that, we're grateful that we only have a $300 reduction. That's pretty good in this day and age of a grant from the U.S. government.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
The last preliminary item that we're gonna do before our presentation is C, which is the Resolution Regarding the Fiscal Year 2019 Title III Funding, Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging's Mini Grant. Mr. Palace?
I will introduce the following motion. Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year 2019, Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging, SWCAA Mini Grant Application and Move for its Adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging Mini Grant Application for FY 2019 Title III Funding and the associated documents binding between Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging Incorporated to support the Caregiver Assistance Program.
Motion by way of resolution by Ms. LaPellis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mauer. Again, for discussion, Mr. Kellogg, I'll allow you to introduce the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to introduce, and I'll ask her to come up in a minute so she can speak further on this, but our, as I reported earlier, our new Director of Community and Social Services, Amy Lakioma. I'm really excited that one of the first things we've accomplished with Amy on board is applying for a grant that we've not availed ourselves of in the past. Unfortunately, this grant may not continue in the future, but at least we have the opportunity to go for it for the next calendar year. So this is a mini-grant, which is up to $10,000. I'm gonna let Ms. Lakioma discuss how she'd like to apply those grant funds. But there-- I'll just preface with there is a match requirement. However, all the activities that we already do in community and social services, those in kind, actually, we already meet the match requirements for what we're doing already. So this grant has the opportunity to, at existing costs, and/or expand upon the program and services that we're already providing. So it has been reviewed by our town attorney, who's provided his opinion. I know that Ms. Lakioma also presented to the Commission on Aging, which was received very favorable response at that board as well. And at that, I think that's all I wanted to say. Amy, if you'd like to come forward and explain a little bit how you wish to utilize this grant opportunity. The one other thing I'll say is I'm bringing it to you ahead of time, because the terms and conditions are-- must be agreed upon advance of the grant date applied for.
Sure, as mentioned, so this is a one-time mini-grant. If accepted, what I'd be requesting is $10,000, which is the maximum amount, to provide caregiver assistance. So they're defining a caregiver as a caregiver of a senior, a minor child, and/or a disabled person. And this would provide case management services to that caregiver, counseling services, as well as some training and support services. So it would, if accepted, it would start in January and run through September. And again, questions, I think?
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you and thank you for coming this evening. Any questions or comments regarding this grant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mauer.
This was presented to the Commission on Aging at their last meeting. Obviously, the Commission on Aging, any-- saw this as any opportunity to bring in extra grant money to help with this was extreme-- would be extremely helpful and they were in full support of this.
Mr. Mauer? Again, also for the record, it was reviewed in LNA and unanimously passed for consideration, so it passed that threshold. Anybody else?
Peter.
Mrs. Martin?
Am I missing the town attorney's opinion on this?
I know he did issue one. It should be on the back page of my cover memo.
Of the cover that I have.
Double sided. Not yours.
Thank you, dear. I wanna see where it is.
Oh, you got one?
I just wanted to-- I have a problem, but thanks, dear.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Anybody else? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna revert back to our third matter on the calendar, which is the Emergency Services Consulting International, ESCI, presentation. That was handled in strategic planning. So, Mr. Condon or Mr. Kellogg, whoever wants to take the floor, you're welcome to do so.
So if I could just preface with, we have Mike Tucker here tonight from ESCI, who's gonna walk us through the presentation. I just wanna acknowledge the great work that was done by the committee. I know you had Mr. Condon as liaison, but also Mr. O'Hara, who chaired the committee. I don't know if you have the chair's permission, if you'd like to say a couple of words and introduce Mr. Tucker. And we'll take it from there.
You knew the answer to that question.
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Town Council members, and First Selectman Kellogg. My name is Patrick O'Hara. I was your Board of Finance Representative and Chairman of the ESCI FIRE Study, for which Mike Tucker at ESCI was the successful bidder. I'm gonna be real quick here, because as you know, you've all received the 140-page-plus document a few weeks back to be able to read it. And, you know, Mike's got a lot of information for you. Real quick, I just wanted to introduce along with Dennis, and actually Ken started on the committee. Here with us this evening, gentlemen, just real quick, Stan, when I call your name. We got Bill Daven, Town Fire Marshal and President of the Monroe Volunteer Fire Department. Josh Crye, who I don't think is with us, who's the Chief of the Monroe Volunteer Fire Department. From Stepney, we started off with Scott Rose, Senior Chief. And we finish with Chief Mike Clemmish from the Stepney Volunteer Fire Department, as well as James Mace, who's President of the Stepney Volunteer Fire Department. Chief John Howe of the Stevenson Volunteer Fire Department. And Jeffrey Giordano, President of the Stevenson Volunteer Fire Department. So those were your study committee members. Next bullet I have for you is, as we went through this process, one of the emphases we'd like everybody to keep in mind as they utilize this study as a tool is that these discussions were stimulated because the Town of Monroe, the Town Council, the elected officials, the citizens, all want to see us continue with a volunteer fire service. And in today's fast-changing environment, there might be some things we end up needing to do to help keep a volunteer fire service in the Town of Monroe. And lastly, when you get to the ESCI portion of the agenda later on in the meeting, I'd ask that you disband us. We're done. We did our job. Our final job was to verify that ESCI had done what they were supposed to do per contract, and they did. So please, don't have us lingering out there. And with that, here's Mike Tucker from--
Actually, Mr. Chairman, can I say some words before, um--
Please.
--our Speaker? I too would like to acknowledge the-- it's been over a year, the work put into this. It's been outstanding, the ESCI. Fire chiefs especially have done a phenomenal job, or indulgently. I mean, we have had multiple thoughts and everybody in town is talking about what we should do, what's going on. But, you know, like my Thai says, you can have a map to get someplace, but unless you know where you're going, you're never gonna get there. I mean, so I think the work that was put in by the departments was outstanding. And, you know, you'll see from this 140-page document, you know, to come up with, I think it was 11 strategic initiatives and 47 short- and long-term plans, that's a lot of work and nothing's gonna be done overnight. If you think about, you know, the way the charter was created, so the Fire Department works kind of independently, but we get the fund, at least a fair amount of it. It's a lot to have thrown upon us, but even more so to-- for volunteers to do this day in, day out. I mean, they cover 600-plus calls a year and it's, you know, with six houses and three chiefs. I mean, you guys are doing a phenomenal job, so I wanna say congratulations and good work. Thank you.
And with that, ladies and gentlemen, Mike Tucker from ESCI.
Well, good evening. For the record, my name is Mike Tucker. I'm with Emergency Services Consulting International. And I want to take the opportunity, obviously, to thank the Chairman, the members of the council, and Mr. Kellogg. And obviously, the fire chiefs and members of the three fire departments for giving us the opportunity to provide this service to you and to provide this report. You know, I think Mr. Condon hit the nail on the head. You know, when you don't know where you're starting at, it's hard to figure out where you're gonna go to and vice versa. So without further ado, because there is a lot of information, I'm gonna try to cover it in as quickly as possible. Obviously, the report is laid out in a basic format. The things we look at initially is evaluation of current conditions. You know, the understanding where you're at right now component. We went through several stakeholder meetings, which were internal customers and internal stakeholders and external customers as well. We conducted an organizational overview. We provided the financial management and analysis. We looked at the capital assets and did an assessment of the current infrastructure, the fire engines and the stations. We looked at staffing and personnel management components. We looked at the support services, which includes your training and your fire prevention pieces. And then we looked at emergency communications and service delivery. Service delivery is pretty much addressing how the departments are operating on scene as far as things like response time and turnout times. Those are absolutely critical, you know, to being able to figure out what needs to happen with the organization, within the organization. And then we closed-- began to close out with future service delivery model. We made a couple of recommendations as far as some capital assets. And then we provided a recommendation on some response time standards that are out there that involve the National Fire-- then we looked at some cost projections, trying to identify some potential savings, you know, for the departments and for the city. And then as Mr. Condon pointed out, the strategic initiatives, and then we rolled out with the recommendations. The strategic initiatives, when we get to them, those are really where the meat and potatoes of the report are at. They're the pathway to implementation. They're broken down into those 11 areas that have a goal and they have objectives. And they've got responsible parties. And we've provided some suggested timelines on when those should be implemented or completed. But the reality is that that's gonna depend upon, you know, the board and the members of the departments and when they choose to implement those things. But those are some great starting points. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and roll into the actual presentation. Obviously, the citizen's expectations. You know, anytime you want to begin to provide a service, you need to understand what the citizens want. You know, we in the fire service are good for knowing what we would like to do, but asking the citizens what they want from us is absolutely key to providing quality service. So when we talked about the citizens, you know, outside of firefighting, they generally believe the Monroe Fire Departments are capable of providing service to the citizens. They believe the firefighters are dedicated, committed. They've got a great reputation and they're well respected. They expect the departments, the three departments, to work well together. And having said that, working with the departments, I will say that they have done an exceptional job of working well together. And that's another thing that's not normal in the fire service. We are notorious for building our little kingdoms and then protecting our little kingdoms. The three departments should be commended for how far they have come in a relatively short period of time. And then obviously, the citizens expect the departments to adhere to national standards. You know, there are no set standards that dictate how you will run a fire department across the country. There are standards that are considered consensus standards. They're the industry standards. They're best practices. But the reality is, there is no one-size-fits-all solution to operating or establishing a fire department. And then what we found interesting was approximately 75% of the external participants that we talked to expect a response time of seven minutes or less to fire incidents in their home. With internal stakeholders, we conducted a SWAT analysis. Most people know this as a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis. We worked as a group to develop a common mission statement, vision statement, and value statement for the organization. Each of the organizations has a purpose statement inside of their bylaws, you know, but they're all just a little bit different. So the group worked to set these together. Again, they're providing service to the same customers, so they felt it was important to develop one common mission statement for them. And obviously, you know, we set the common set of values and a common vision statement as well. This is the mission statement that they worked through. And obviously, it is the mission of the Monroe, Stepney, and Stevenson Fire Departments to provide fire suppression and rescue services to the citizens of the Town of Monroe in an efficient and effective manner and with the best resources provided by the community. You know, this mission statement, it provides the who, the what, the where, the when, and all the parties that are responsible. So it provides expectations of the services that are gonna be provided by the department and it provides some responsibility upon the citizens, because the citizens will determine what that level of service, you know, will look like. Obviously, the vision statements are much more wordier. And, you know, they want to be recognized as an organization that other departments can be measured by. You know, so they want to set the standard in professionalism and training. We looked into establishing the common set of values. And, you know, in organizational development, the values-- And this, these are the four values that collectively the firefighters decided that they want to be judged by, they want to hold themselves accountable by. And when they bring new members on the department, this is how the new members are expected to behave. When we talk about the evaluation of current conditions, obviously, the basis for providing services lie within the policies, the procedures, the charters, the rules and regulations that run the organization. And one of the reasons we look at this is because I can tell you more often than you would believe, we run across municipalities and fire departments across the country that are not legally established. Even 100-year-old fire departments in large metropolitan cities never legally established a department. It was just something they sort of always did, you know. So we looked into the charter. Obviously, the charter does not specifically call for the department, the town to directly operate a fire department. Each of the departments are legally established entities functioning as 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(4) entities. Obviously, fire marshal services are directly called for by the town to be provided. And the current system is operated pretty similar to many fire departments across the United States. We talk about the organizational design. Each has an established organizational structure. It's well-known. The both, all three organizations operate in a traditional paramilitary structure, again, like most fire departments across the country. And then they all operate under an established board. And then it's important to note that all of the personnel are volunteer and do not receive any specific benefits beyond, other than tax abatement. And then the town has no organizational operational oversight over the fire departments. When you look at the infrastructure, obviously, the town of Monroe is approximately 26 square miles. Each department operates two fire stations, you know, and it's the full range. You know, it's rural up to some urban areas as defined by NFPA 1720, National Fire Protection Association. And it's important to understand that deployment decisions define the response capability of a department. You know, that really goes without saying. But it's important also to understand that when you identify deployment matrices and methodologies, things like risk, response time, you know, access challenges, deployment, personnel safety, you know, all come into play. You know, and this is important because, again, I come back to the fact that there is no one-size-fits-all to operation of a department. You know, what works in Monroe, Connecticut, may not work in St. Cloud, Florida. They're two different communities, different expectations. The decisions need to balance the financial considerations of each department and the town as well. And then the standard and industry best practices that are out there can help drive those decision-making, but ultimately, it's the town's responsibility to set that level of service. Collectively, the three departments respond to approximately 596 calls for service. The rescue and EMS incidents accounted for 10%. And it's important to note that EMS accounts for less than 1% of the department's responses. And this is atypical of most fire departments across the United States. Many fire departments are providing EMS service and, believe it or not, I would not recommend having your fire department respond to EMS calls except for what they currently respond to in assistance. When you begin to apply EMS services to a volunteer fire department, you'll see the workload will ramp up so fast that you'll typically burn out the firefighters. You know, so unless there's ever a need, that is not a recommendation that we would make. And then obviously, the issue when you look at some of the statistics, false calls, categorization of false calls account for 44% of the department's responses. That's an unusually high number. It's something we make a recommendation in the report to begin some kind of analysis to figure out what's going on there. More than likely, that's just a click of a button, you know, when a firefighter is a little confused as to what to call it. You know, even false alarms are not necessarily false calls. It was a real call, you know, but it's easy to classify it as a false call. So that needs to be worked out. Each department classifies response and support of each other as mutual aid. And that's important when looking at the next bullet, because if you look at their statistics separately, it looks like they run 1,171 calls. But the reality is, inside the city, when they're responding in support of each other, it's 596 times. You know, data collection and analysis are the basis for any assessment of performance. It's also the basis for establishing any future direction. You know, throughout the report, you will see us refer back to the need to collect data and for it to be solid, reliable and valid. You know, the firefighters are notorious for reacting off of emotion. You know, we commonly talk about the last big fire, you know, and we talk about that for long periods of time, but unfortunately, the citizens tend to forget that one about six months later. But, you know, the law enforcement, our law enforcement president and assistant can, they come in with data. They talk about statistics. And any decision that you make in the future needs to be driven by data. And then the department's recently transitioned to a common RMS system. One is still not transitioned yet, but will be making that transition next month, and that is important. Again, this is just a breakdown of the calls. Most agencies that we do work for, their fire calls account for about 2% of their call volume. 98% is everything else. And the reason it's a little different here is, again, because the departments don't respond to EMS calls, so that changes that number. Fire prevention and public education typically focus on, you know, learn not to burn, stop, drop and roll, fire prevention weekends, schools. The reality is that in the industry, we're beginning to transition from focusing just on the prevention of fire to an all-risk reduction, a community risk reduction program where we're trying to focus on everything, which includes slips, trips, falls and homes. You know, grab bars in the restrooms or bathrooms for senior citizens. You know, so it's a holistic approach to reducing the risk because if we can stop the emergency from happening, the fire department never has to be called, you know, in the first place or the ambulance service as well. This is just to give you a rundown. Your Fire Prevention Bureau, your Fire Marshal's Office, obviously, has got an administrative assistant, a senior deputy fire marshal and three deputy fire marshals who are on a per diem basis. There are three primary components to your typical fire prevention programs. Fire code enforcement, public fire and life safety education and cause and origin investigation, which are obviously provided by your Fire Prevention and Fire Marshal's Office. When it comes to the budget and finance, obviously, the town provides the finance, financing and funding for each of the departments. And those, that funding is for operations and capital equipment, which obviously are some of your largest costs within the volunteer system. Usually within a career organization, and this is very important to remember, most career organizations, 80% of your budget is attributable to salaries. You know, so volunteer fire departments are tremendous value to the community. They save lots and lots of money. Each department prepares its own budget and submits a separate budget request for funding to the town. And once it's submitted, it proceeds just like any other department of the town. And no fire department employee or member is on the town's benefit system for the purposes of providing fire services. And one of the biggest things that have got to be kept in mind is the state's financial condition now is going to continue to impact your ability to fund and provide services within the city or the town. We looked at the capital assets. You know, the three things that the fire departments have are people, equipment and facilities. Those are your number-one drivers of cost. There are six stations, obviously, three are owned by the town, three are owned by each of the fire departments. The reality is, and just like almost every community across this country, the stations were not placed on using any level of analysis. Most of the time, fire stations are placed upon where we can get free land at, you know, where somebody makes a donation, you know, so, and it is common here as well as it is anywhere else. And obviously, the emergency vehicles are relatively new and well-maintained. You know, there are, right now, there are eight fire engines, two aero units, two tankers, one brush truck and several support vehicles. You know, and again, as we move through, you know, some of our recommendations, you know, it's important to remember that in the volunteer system, you have to move people, firefighters, from the station to the incident. And that requires apparatus and vehicles to do that. So no matter where you settle on an ultimate inventory level, you've got to remember you need the ability to move those firefighters from the station to the scene because if you allow firefighters to respond directly to the scene in their personal vehicles, you take, you increase the liability of the citizens on the roadways, you increase congestion at the emergency scenes and it's unsafe condition to allow, you know, volunteers to respond directly to the scene. National Fire Protection Association 1901, standard for automotive fire apparatus, that's the nationally accepted standard. It talks about design, maintenance and operation, but it does not address the numbers of fire trucks that are needed in a fire station or fire services operation. And it does not necessarily give a definitive answer as to how old an apparatus needs to be before it gets replaced. There's some suggestions, but there's no standard that dictates that. And in the report, you'll see that we've made a recommended fleet inventory level. This is what we call the economic theory of replacement. Basically, what it means is when you purchase a truck, the capital costs are high, but the maintenance are low because it's brand-new and obviously, there's a warranty. Over time, the blue line, it becomes a little more expensive over time, where the green line with a block around it indicates that intersection of about where a community needs to begin to think about replacing an apparatus. And those are driven by cost, maintenance and those kinds of things, not just, you know, age of vehicles. The reality is that a fire engine in downtown Miami has probably got to last about four years. You know, but, you know, a fire engine, you know, in Monroe community may go longer, 12, 15, maybe even 20 years, depending upon maintenance. You know, so that's, it's a local issue, it's a policy issue for the community to decide when they're going to replace those apparatus. We looked at the training, you know, of all three organizations and the reality is, they're all NIMS compliant, the National Incident Management System, which is critical for if the community ever has to apply for disaster assistance or any kind of grant funding for the fire departments. They have to be and the town has to be NIMS compliant. They all operate under the ICS system, which is our incident command system. All of the firefighters are trained in NFPA 1001, you know, and again, that's, they're to be commended for that because that's not the norm across this United States. There are differing levels of training that exist to some of the specialty rescues. ICE rescue would be, you know, an example. And then all the agencies have trained personnel to the operations level for hazardous materials Probe Training Program Management, each of the department does conduct regular training activities and they are consistent with accepted standards. Each of the organizations have an established training officer position and they utilize formal lesson plans. And that is very important because a lot of fire departments, when they begin training, they show up on whatever training night is, you know, they talk about training and it never seems to get done. But when it's driven by somebody who's got the responsibility for it, lesson plans, the real training typically gets done. Each of the departments indicate varying levels of training resources. You know, some have more than the others. And departments have established regular training schedules, but there's limited inter-agency coordination between, you know, the three departments. Talk about training facilities. The reality is firefighters need to train in a realistic environment. You can only look at fire on the computer screen or on a video so many times, you know, and talk about how you're supposed to fight that fire. It needs to be in a realistic environment. Live fire training is what we're talking about. ISO requires the regular use of a dedicated training location and it does not necessarily mean a multimillion-dollar training facility, you know, but it does mean a dedicated location. As example, we've got fire departments in Florida that have taken to using Connex boxes, shipping containers, to cobble together, you know, some pretty significant training facilities and do some pretty significant live fire training. I use them at the Florida State Fire College and when I'm done with one, it takes me about a year to a year and a half, I'm done with one, I get rid of it and I buy a new one for $4,000. You know, so they're relatively cheap. You know, and obviously, right now, to get the live fire training, the departments have to go to the state training facility, which is some distance, you know, from the community. And whenever your firefighters are not here, they go there for training, that means they're not here and available, you know, to respond to calls. And it was an issue during your last ISO grading, the lack of a dedicated training facility. But the reality is that departments have made a strong commitment to training. That is very obvious. Departments can collectively make improvements and those improvements, when they work together, will make positive impacts on that ISO score, which has the ability to influence your insurance Just to give you an idea of the station locations relative to municipal boundaries. We looked at the calls per month and roughly 70 to 80% of your calls are occurring between the month of March to the end of about October, with a little bit of a spike, you know, in December. We looked at calls by day of the week and other than Sunday, the rest of your calls are relatively normal, you know, across the week. These are the calls by hours of day. It's nearly 80% of the calls in the town of Monroe are occurring between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and about 11:00 p.m. You know, and obviously, those are the points in time when the volunteers have got work, you know, to do. They're either out of town or they're committed. The reality is that gone are the days of employers allowing firefighters to leave work to respond to fire calls anymore. It's, you know, when they're gone, they're not producing, you know, for the business. And this is being experienced across the United States. Pennsylvania just issued what they call a crisis in volunteer services. They are now below 36,000 volunteers for the entire state of Pennsylvania. And it used to be one of the largest volunteer services in our country. I'm just starting a project with a department there where the fire department informed the town that they could not guarantee any kind of response during the daytime hours. And that's becoming a very much a norm across the United States. Obviously, staffing and personnel management, you know, again, there's no specific standard that says how many firefighters have to be on a scene. But there are a couple of standards that address how many firefighters have to be on scene to do certain interior, what they call the immediately dangerous to life and health environment. NFPA RS, IS, the OSHA 1910-134 is our two-in, two-out standard. Basically means if two firefighters are going to go inside, I have to have two firefighters outside to rescue those two firefighters if something goes wrong. And then NFPA 1720 provides some guidance, you know, some recommendations on the numbers of firefighters that should be on scene, you know, in a certain timeframe, you know, to effectively fight and mitigate a fire. And the reality is, each of the three fire departments do maintain policies and procedures that are specific to their agency, but over the past couple of years, they've begun to try to work together to sort of standardize those. NFPA 1201 is the standard, the guiding standard we use for providing services, emergency services to communities. And they address written policies and procedures, the identification of critical issues, internal and external communications, the effective security procedures in fire stations. It used to be that fire stations were open and everybody was welcome, but the reality is, in today's world, we do not want people passing through fire stations where they can pick up bunker gear and pretend to be firefighters or steal fire trucks. You know, and obviously, having proper record-keeping procedures in place. And all three departments do have those in place. We talk about the critical issues. There are three, obviously, that they're concerned about. Recruitment and retention of volunteers. I just addressed the issue with Pennsylvania. It's impacting fire departments across the country. But one of the driving forces that we kept hearing as we talked to the firefighters was the difficulty of the younger firefighters, volunteers, to find affordable housing, you know, in the area. And they felt that they were losing some younger people because of that. And obviously, daytime response is an issue. And then they felt it important to have common emergency scene operation standards. And those are the ones that address, you know, the first engine is going to do this, the second engine is going to do this, the third is going to do this, you know. How they're going to, you know, operate, you know, their respective, you know, purchasing of pens and papers and things like that does not necessarily need to be the same, but you have common emergency scenes procedures. And obviously, they should be commended for what they have accomplished so far. These are the basic response districts for each of the three fire departments. You'll see in the body of the report that we're making a recommendation to realign them just a little bit. You know, the reality is that they're sort of where they need to be, but some realignment could be done to spread some of that workload a little bit. This incident location map sort of gives you an idea where the largest call volume is occurring in the community. The bigger the dot, the more numbers of calls happen in that area. Small dots are just a couple of calls or a single call. You have to do it this way because if you place every single dot for the past year, it begins to spread out on a map and you can't really tell anything from it. ISO is one of the standards out there, the insurance services organization. Again, this is the one that typically impacts your, either your business or your homeowner's insurance. They expect to have a fire engine, one and a half miles is their coverage area. You can see here that Stevenson Station 2 and Monroe are well within the municipal boundaries, but the two Stepney stations are pretty close to the boundaries. And again, this is just one piece of the puzzle. We do not recommend that anybody builds solely, builds and operates a fire department based upon ISO standards. It's just one of the things to take into account. The challenge here is the two Stepney stations, half of their one and a half mile area is- We do not recommend that anybody builds solely, builds and operates a fire department based upon ISO standards. It's just one of the things to take into account. The challenge here is the two Stepney stations, half of their one and a half mile area is outside of the municipal boundary, you know, so they sort of lose that coverage area, you know, but as was pointed out to us, and which is probably true, that during certain rush hours on that highway, if you had to expect, if you built a station between those two and expected firefighters to respond to the station, it could take them close to 10 minutes to get to the station. So those are the kind of things that have got to be weighed as you begin to look at station locations in the future. Aerial distribution for ISO looks at a two-and-a-half-mile travel distance, you know, again, not a circle, you know, but a travel distance. The current locations, obviously, are Stepney Station Number 2 and Monroe Station Number 2. This is important to remember, especially with Monroe Station Number 2, that northern coverage area for that area, when we talk about another map later. These are the anticipated travel times for the fire stations. Obviously, the lighter the coverage, the quicker the fire department can get there. In this analysis, we did not utilize Monroe Station 2 as a possible fire station for determining drive time because that station is beginning to be utilized more for EMS, and the thoughts are to, you know, to actually transition the fire truck out of that station. But you'll see that even with that happening, there's still about a four-to-six-minute travel time, you know, can be expected up into that area. The next thing that we'd like to look at, distribution is where the stations are placed, that ISO map I was just looking at, how far apart the stations are. Concentration has to do with how quick we can get a certain number of firefighters to a scene, and that is critical when you're talking about structure fires where the expectation is for a single-story residential structure fire, we try to get 15 people there on scene in about a nine-minute time. You know, the way the reporting is currently being done right now, that analysis cannot be conducted. Again, comes back to quality data. Nothing that the fire departments are doing wrong, it's just the fire service has never expected this kind of analysis to be done. So our recommendation moving forward is for them to begin to include this in their future reporting. You know, the departments need to establish a set of written procedures that standardize the entry and the recording of data, for incident data. You know, there is a little bit of differentiation. An example we use is that if a department responds to help do a cleanup on an auto accident, that's a Series 400 call. If they respond to assist EMS with a patient on that call, it's a Series 300 call. So it's an auto accident, may be classified, you know, in two different categories. So there just needs to be some standardization of what the expectation when people provide that service, how they're going to categorize that call. And obviously, understanding the ability to assemble that effective response force is critical to any future decision-making. This is NFPA 1720. If you have an urban area, which they classify as more than 1,000 people per square mile, the expectation is that you would get 15 personnel to that scene in nine minutes 90% of the time. We're transitioning away from average response times. Average means, the problem with it is that that means there's 50% below, 50% above, and some of the statistical outliers can skew your data as to where, when you go to this fractile of reporting, those outliers tend to get, you know, pushed out, which they shouldn't be there anyway. If you're in a suburban area, it changes to 10 personnel in 10 minutes 80% of the time. And then in the rural areas, it's six personnel with a response time of 14 minutes 80% of the time. Monroe does not have any remote areas, that's when you get it in Colorado and Wyoming and those places. If you get a fire truck in an hour out there, you're doing well. When you talk about response times, there's three specific components to a response time. There's the call processing time, that's the time that the dispatcher picks up the phone and says, "What's your, what is your issue? What is your, what is your emergency?" Till they type the information in, process it, firefighters out, that's the call processing time. That does not account for, in Monroe, the initial 911 call rolls through your police department's PSAP, and then it goes over to a C-MAN, you know, so that does not account for that transition in time there as well. Turnout time is from the time the firefighters get the tone on their pagers or their alert system to the point in time that they are at the station and report themselves as responding. And then travel time is from the curb, when they pull out of the station, till they're in front of the emergency. You total those three together to give you your total response time. And obviously, we're recommending that town and the fire departments establish what that response time criteria looks like. Reliability analysis is another component we like to look at. It addresses the fact that how many times is, does another unit have to respond in to cover the first unit's area? Example would be, how many times would Stepney have to respond into Monroe to cover Monroe's call because Monroe is already committed on a call? You know, and that's a critical thing to understand, because if you've got a system that's getting very busy, and it can't handle its own calls, then some serious decisions need to be made moving forward. Again, at the time of this report, the departments don't collect data in that manner. Again, that is not, anything the departments have done wrong, that's just not been an expectation of the fire service historically. And one of the recommendations we're making is that the departments establish what we call either service demand zones or fire demand zones, which are basically taking your existing response areas and subdividing them into smaller districts or sub-districts that are built around the population of that area, urban area, suburban area, or rural area, because they do have slightly different response criteria. When you looked at your mutual aid system, your automatic aid systems, you know, pretty much everywhere within the town of Monroe, mutual aid departments can get to the firefighters' assistance within 10 minutes or less. And that's pretty important for, especially for that effective response force number, you know, having help coming. And not to mention, there's a difference between mutual aid and automatic aid. Mutual aid is when I get on scene and I decide I need more help, I call for more help. Automatic aid is when it's working a structure fire, and that's confirmed, that help is automatically toned, and ISO actually gives you additional points for having automatic aid as opposed to mutual aid. Obviously, people are the biggest drivers of emergencies. If we didn't have people, we wouldn't have emergencies. You know, so, you know, historically, the town of Monroe has grown over time until about the year 2000, and then it's been relatively flat since and projected to stay relatively flat. But the reality is that the population continues to age in place, so your call volume will continue to tick up, but it won't necessarily be driven by increases in population. This is just to give you an understanding, if you go to a structure fire with, it's considered a maximum risk, you know, and this would be something along the lines of a strip mall shopping center, you can expect to need about 37 people on that scene to handle that emergency. If you go as low as a single-story residential structure, the moderate-risk level, you're looking at about 15 people are what you need on scene to effectively mitigate that emergency. Obviously, when you set response time standards, the question is, there's two questions, what are the expectations of the community and the elected officials, and what response time performance is reasonable to contain fire, to stop the loss, and to save lives? Our recommendation in looking at the data, and when you look in the report, you'll see where we have broken down each department's turnout time, travel time, and total response time. You know, our recommendation is that the call processing time should be 1 minute and 30 seconds 90% of the time. That's a standard that applies, that only the dispatch center has the ability to influence. Your fire departments don't have that ability to influence that, and it's set at 90% because of the NFPA standard. And obviously, turnout time should be five minutes or less 80% of the time. Your travel time should be six minutes or less 90% of the time, and your total response time should be 11 minutes or less 80% of the time. Your departments are already performing at that level, you know, so our recommendation doesn't tighten it, it's just to start now, and then collect that data and analyze it moving forward. You'll see in the report that we're actually making a recommendation for the town and the fire departments to move to a four-station coverage model. Of those 500, almost 600 calls, we applied what it would take to cover 100% of those calls. Remember, we're looking for an 80% coverage. If we wanted to get to 100% of those calls, a common travel time would be eight minutes, and that is about where your station response districts would break to make that happen. Remember the first map, we talked about aerial distribution, ISO distribution of two-and-a-half miles. Our recommendation is to bring that aerial truck from Monroe's current station Number 2 to Monroe Station Number 1 at some point, you know, in the future. Obviously, some modification has got to be done to make that happen. But you see how it brings that coverage polygon back down into the community and provides more coverage inside, you know, of the community. Again, strategic initiatives. These were not initiatives that we just picked out of the sky. These are initiatives that if, if an organization ever decides to go for international accreditation, these are the strategic initiative categories that the accrediting body looks at. Not that Monroe is ever going to go for accreditation, or that could be a long ways in the future, but if you begin to think in those terms, you know, you sort of are building around what's considered nationally acceptable standards. Obviously, governance, administration, you know, financial resources, goals, objectives, all the way down to customer and market focus. And again, when you get into the body of the report and those strategic initiatives, you'll see goals, you'll see objectives, you'll see individuals, irresponsible parties, and we've applied a recommended timeline on accomplishing those. But again, those could change based upon whatever the committee or the fire departments choose to tackle first. Obviously, short-term, long-term goals, those are broken down into organizational prevention operations, training, and administration. When we talk about the governance and administration, the organizational goals, one of our recommendations is for the town and the three fire departments to enter into a written contract where everybody knows what the expectations are. You know, there's no confusion. If the departments are meeting what their contractually required, things are good. If the town is meeting what their contractually required, things are good, you know, but there's a mechanism to hold everybody accountable. We're recommending establish a single administrative structure to facilitate the business side of the operation. The reality is firefighters get into this business to fight fires, you know, but along the way, we somewhere, we think we want to be fire chiefs, and then we get to fight fires that have nothing to do with a real fire. And it takes us, it takes them away from doing the things that they need to be doing as far as responding to emergencies. But I was asked what this actually means, and in Connecticut, we've seen organizations that have chosen, you know, that have multiple fire departments serving a common area to do what they call a chief of chiefs, you know, where one of those three or four chiefs becomes that chief of the chiefs for a two-year period, and it rotates. Or we've seen other communities that have actually hired an individual to do just the business side, you know, the administrative side of that operation. That individual has no fire-ground authority, they don't respond on emergencies, other than maybe to be an assistant, you know, for the fire chief, you know, and so those are your two extremes of what we're seeing within the state of Connecticut. You know, the town and the fire departments just need to figure out which one works best, you know, for them. But our recommendation wasn't necessarily to pick one over the other. Obviously, standardizing the entry of call typing, one of the biggest things that has got to be handled, and myself and Mr. Kellogg had to work with the dispatch center to go back and get them to produce some additional data reporting for us. And I will be honest, it was not data that should have been hard to get, but we had to, we, ESCI, had to pay a little extra money to get that out of their comm center. It is information that your fire chief should have available to them every single day if they're going to run an organization. So you'll see that we're recommending the establishment, working with the Southwest Regional Communication Center to become compliant, stay compliant with NFPA 1221 and NFPA 1720. Those are two of the standards that address that call processing time. And then establish a standing communications to work with that communication center on a monthly and a quarterly basis to make sure that the data that's coming out is the data that all the fire departments need. And then, obviously, we are recommending the closure of, at some point, Stevenson Station Number 1, and go ahead, transitioning forward with the closure of Monroe Station Number This recommendation applies pretty much to your fire marshal's office. The implementation of that formal community risk reduction, you know, moving away from just learn not to burn, stop, drop, and roll and that stuff, and moving towards that holistic approach to preventing all emergencies as much as possible. Making sure that all the personnel are properly trained within the fire marshal's office, put to NFPA 1452, which is the standard for community risk reduction training, and then ensuring that the fire marshal's bureau is in compliance with NFPA 1730, which applies to fire prevention and fire inspection operations. For operations, you know, obviously, continue to collect accurate and complete response time data for all the units that are assigned, implement a common formal pre-fire plan process. You know, the first time a firefighter goes into a building is not the first time that he or she ever sees that building, because when they go in and it's on fire, it's dark and they can't see, and they don't know where they're at. You know, having a formal pre-fire plan process gives them that ability to understand that building before they get there on any emergency. Obviously, implementation of standard response plans, continue to work on common operational procedures. And this is an area where the three fire departments should really be commended. The instances of cancer in the fire service are skyrocketing, absolutely skyrocketing. The fire departments have already addressed the issue of not allowing firefighters to carry bunker gear in their cars, to carry it home, so they're not cross-contaminating families, not cross-contaminating vehicles. They launder their gear on a regular basis, you know, but they need to continue to look towards those best practices in the industry and just try to minimize the exposure. And monitor the effective response force, that's at 15 people that you need on scene to begin firefighting operations, and then obviously, establish response time goals for the entire jurisdiction. Training, we're recommending the establishment of a training committee that's made up of each, a member from each agency, set an annual training plan, and utilize a common schedule and common curriculum. And then NFPA 1410 is the standard that you use to set your training scenarios by. And then, obviously, looking for the ability to establish a dedicated training ground to get a positive impact on your next ISO score. And then, obviously, making sure that everybody is recording that training on a, similarly. For administration, continue that transition to a common records management system, standardize the management processes to ensure consistency in all operations, develop and implement an ongoing strategic planning process. As I talked to the firefighters last night, this can't be the last time this strategic plan is ever done. You know, it's at a point now where every year, this thing can be added to, worked on, and refined, you know, so this should become a normal part of the culture, is to conduct this planning internally. Establish a collective capital inventory program, evaluate mutual aid and automatic aid agreements to make sure they're current, and then identify the performance metrics that are going to be reported not only to the council, but to the citizens. I will tell you that your three fire departments are doing some pretty good stuff, and as I told them, you know, they need to start to tell their story through these performance metrics, because if they don't tell their story, somebody else is going to tell it, and you'll never like the story that somebody else tells for you, you know, so establishing those standards so that they can communicate to the citizens and to you all. When somebody says, "We're doing a good job," what does a good job mean? And obviously, in conclusion, the fire departments serving the town, the citizens of Monroe, are doing a good job. They really are. I can tell you, I have seen some horror shows out there, and the Monroe departments do not fall into that category at all. Volunteer fire departments are a tremendous asset to the community across this country, but unfortunately, volunteerism in the United States is changing, and unfortunately, it's going to have a negative impact at some point. And then the implementation of this strategic plan serves as a foundation for future success. So, Mr. Chairman, that's everything I got. That's 140 pages.
That was very impressive. Thank you very much. At this point, before I just open the floor for discussion, as Mr. O'Hara pointed, I just want to talk about direction. I think it would be appropriate, moving forward, to, obviously, as I say, chew on this data a little bit and keep this active amongst council. I think I'd like to see FEPs just digest the data a little bit and maybe issue a kind of, you know, preliminary report as to what your feeling is on the implementation of the strategies suggested in the report moving forward, maybe interact with the fire departments and, you know, just to kind of get a better feel as to where we are right now. And then, it seems like a perfect opportunity to kind of punt it to strategic planning, if Mr. Condon would be so kind to take on something else, and since this is, as was pointed out, we don't want this to be a one-time occurrence. I think strategic planning would be ripe for consideration of, you know, a preliminary short-term and long-term plan moving forward as far as council's concerned. And then I would ask Mr. Kellogg to, you know, on a parallel plane, have his office, you know, give us proper feedback as well, which I'm sure he's going to comment on in a moment, but that's where I see But that's where I see this moving forward. I don't see anything happening immediate. Obviously, we want an opportunity to utilize the data to the best of our ability and do it comprehensively and collaboratively. So, I just want to throw that out there, it's what I was thinking before we start firing questions around, is like, where are we now, where are we going, what's happening, and you know, when is the station closing, and what's happening tomorrow, and that kind of stuff. So, with that, I'll just ask for your comments, Mr. Kellogg, and then we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. You actually, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think I'll certainly have, my office certainly have some thoughts around a lot of these recommendations and kind of where, you know, I think we should be focusing and prioritizing. But I think it does need to continue to be an ongoing collaborative effort amongst the fire services, my office, and the council as we continue to move forward. I think the idea of a, one of both committees' involvement ongoing makes perfect sense to continue to kind of shepherd through and kind of evaluate, help to evaluate some of these recommendations. You know, certainly, you know, there's a lot here, there's a lot here, and there's a lot of good stuff here, and I greatly appreciate it, but this will certainly take time, and it's not, you know, we can't possibly implement things overnight. It's going to take time, it's going to take ongoing discussions and determining what we think is possible over what period of time and how we feel about a lot of these things, and lots of ongoing discussion, but you've provided us the framework around which to have those discussions, and that's exactly what we're looking for. So, I agree with your approach, I think it's phenomenal place that we're at. And if I may, I just wanted to, I wanted to echo Mr. Condon's comments relative to the great job our fire services are doing. I think this validated the good work that I think we all knew in our hearts, but this has put it to paper. And so, I thank the three departments and the people for all their dedication, all the time that they commit to our town, and it's greatly appreciated. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that, remember, when we started down this process, I recall, I believe I was council and sharing SBC at the time, when we were having a separate conversation around this, and I think I made some vague comment about, we should really be planning on how the departments work together, I think we were talking about apparatus, and the fire services immediately jumped in and said, "We would love to do that, we've been looking for something like that." They fully embraced it, and, you know, now we're, now we are where we are. So, I just wanted to say thank you again for being willing to go through this process, because, you know, it's not always easy to say, "Hey, we're going to have a..." We do, it takes, it takes a lot of maturity and it takes a lot of, you know, confidence and, you know, belief in doing what's right for the community. So, I appreciate that, and thank you for everything, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you took the words out of my mouth, playing ping pong here.
Okay.
I want to thank the departments and their members and the chiefs as well, because I can still see the expression on Ms. Martin's face at that first strategic planning meeting, where this was a completely ancillary issue, and Mr. Tucker, you should probably hear this, because you probably wouldn't know it from all the good work that I'm sure you experienced with the collaborative effort amongst the three departments. But we found out that the departments jointly had made this request to the town many years ago, and it was, died on the vine or was rejected because there was an overall feeling in the community that there were, the departments were building their own kingdoms and were very protective and that they would never consider something like this, and it was, it would mean the downfall of the entire volunteer community and yada, yada, yada. And so, we had not heard this before, and Ms. Martin and Mr. Lappelus, who've served many, many more years than I, had said, you know, she was shocked by the department's willingness to immediately get this done. And I can still see, like I said, I can still see the reaction on her face. But I just want to thank you for bringing it to our attention, being pretty vigilant and trying to push this forward, and this is one of the best pieces of work that we've seen, I've seen up here as a member of council, to see this idea go from, you know, just a quick afterthought to a comprehensive plan like this. This is really encouraging, and I hope this serves as a model for other projects that we do in town. I know that you would agree with that, Mr. Kellogg. So, with that, I'll open the floor up to questions, Ms. Martin.
I just, I notice, I guess it is a question.
What comment?
This, a comment. This is amazing what we have here, and I congratulate you on your work. In that vein, if this goes to FEPs and then comes to strategic planning, can we put...
Which is what I mean, you're not strategic.
Can we put some kind of a time thing on this? I mean, could the chair or the selectmen say, "I'd like to have initial ideas back by February first, March first, something like that?"
Well, it's likely to move it forward, but I don't want to do is move it forward. I didn't want to anything that we're going to move it forward. In other words, punt it to the legislators, that sounds like, well, I think what you're getting at, it sounds like a lot of red tape and delay and nothing happening. I didn't want that to happen because we're not the subject matter experts. So, I think we want to work collaboratively with those who put all the time and effort in, and that's what I want to facilitate. So, what I'm trying to do is facilitate moving this forward as quickly as possible so that we're all in tune with that process moving forward, as opposed to the past where sometimes it was, throw it in committee, it sits there, and then no one communicates, and then, hey, by the way, what's going on with that? I think Mr. Kellogg's been a pretty good conduit.
In that vein, are you willing to...
I'm willing, I'm willing to do something tomorrow, however, I think part of the reason why I wanted to punt it to FEPs for that interaction is to determine what those viable timelines would be. So, I think that's a great point. Maybe in our next meeting, we can have that established, or the meeting after that, Mr. Condon.
Yeah, I think, speaking on behalf of the committee, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's us.
The only way this works is if the three gentlemen and the fire, well, four gentlemen, sorry, Mr. Dab, and I still consider you gentlemen, if you stay, if all this existing committee minus Pat stays together and works on this, ninety percent of this is internal to the fire departments, right? So, you know, we're not going to get through this without your help and your commitment to stick with it and really, you know, put forth the effort to make the changes you see that we need to make and work together so we have a collaborative solution. There's no way we can put a timeline on this right now, sorry, until we figure out exactly what it is we can do, can't do, when we go through the recommendations. So, I'd like to officially kick Pat off, although he did a great job, but show the committee back together so we can continue monthly meetings or even more, depending on what your schedules are, to kind of get this on, or we're never going to go anywhere. It'll be just a great report that sits on the shelf, gathered in dust. I don't think we even afford to have that happen.
Yeah, but I think as Pat, as Mr. O'Hara indicated, that committee's work is complete. And the reason why I suggested what I suggested, so that, what you're saying is that doesn't happen, I want to control the discussion and I want it to move forward. So, I'd like FEPs to be the subcommittee on the ground to move it forward, and strategic planning to see it through. And I don't know what committee you're talking about, but those would be the committees that I would like to have shepherd this.
Speaking for strategic FEPs is over here.
All right, okay. All right, with that, any further, Mr. Mauer?
First and foremost, this is extremely impressive, and a credit to our departments as well as to what comes out in these reports. It's phenomenal to see it on paper, as you would take what our thoughts are and actually see it on paper is quite something. So, hats off to you and to all of you and to all of the people who volunteer as part of this. I have one very, very quick question that's just my naivety in how different calls are routed. Could you tell me, good intent calls and service calls, what those tend to entail?
Sometimes that's a pretty, that can be a little bit fuzzy.
Okay.
As a general rule, and I do mean general with a broad brush, good intent calls are cats and trees, that's a good intent call, because if we don't go up the tree to get the kitty out of the tree, Mr. Smith is going to go up the tree to get the kitty out of the tree, he's going to fall out of the tree, and then we're going to have a real emergency on our hands. So, those typically are considered good intents. You know, I think service calls would be, you guys have basements around here?
Yes.
We don't have those in Florida. They call those indoor pools when we try to dig them. But, you know, a service call might be, you know, a water in a basement, and you pump it out, so that's a, that's a rough rule.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Nothing further?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you very much for that report, and I hope you're enjoying the wonderful weather we're having right now.
Until seven o'clock tomorrow morning. Mr. Chairman, I would want to...
Sixty-nine degrees in Miami.
I'm not going quite that far north, yeah, so I would like you to understand, though, that what makes us a little different than most consultants is that when I get on that plane tomorrow morning, I am, I am still a resource for you. And for those three firefighters, I know they've got my number, they can pick up the phone, they can call me, that is no cost for them to do that. If you want me to come back, yeah, that may be a cost, but, you know, I will always be here available for them, for Mr. Kellogg, and even for the strategic planning committee. If they've got questions, don't hesitate to call, I will always be there for them. I still check back with customers I've got from five and six years ago. It's important to me that they succeed, you know, because, for obvious business reasons, you know, but it is really fun to watch fire departments move forward, and so we'd like to continue to be part of that. So, please, don't hesitate to call if you've got any other questions, you know, in the future.
Thank you for your good work, I appreciate it.
Put it on record, the chiefs are debating when to come down to see you, right? So, if you look at their faces, that's not in the cards.
I think, I think they mentioned something about an annual planning meeting.
Yeah.
Before we move on, would anybody else like to comment that was related in any manner to this study as to what you'd like to see happen, the timeline, anything at all?
The only thing I'd like to say is, some of this stuff is going to have to be baby steps before we take giant leaps. So, we have to digest all the information that's been given to us, see what we can implement sooner than later.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, anybody else?
There's really no way to tell from where I live, from the time the call goes in until they go past my house, but I can tell you they go up and down Main Street, because I live on the Stepney side, and so, they're going up and down Main Street, and they're going up Paddle Town Road, because there's a lot of houses out there, you know, on a regular basis, and they go buzzing through, and they are on the line all the time. My, I have a neighbor who is really involved, he's one of the drivers, and he invited him over for dinner, and his buzzer goes off, and it's like, every time, he doesn't want to stay because the buzzer goes off every time, but, and he leaves, and he's off. And so, I really, it's really great for all volunteers on his side.
Just doesn't like Dottie's food.
Or he doesn't like her cooking, Lee.
Yeah, his wife, Dottie.
And the fact that you live on two one-way streets is probably screwing up the truck.
In the spirit of this meeting going sideways, Mr. Chris, would you like to comment on this at this moment? This portion at least.
Let me turn the camera back, it's on the computer right now.
Yes, thank you. I represent most of it for it, and I'd like to second everything that was said. I think as a layperson having no real involvement or understanding, it was very, you know, easy to understand. To the council, I'm glad to hear you're going to move it forward. My one request, there's obviously one thing in here that we can do in the short term that we've talked about for years and years and years, and that's planning to pay for the replacement of equipment going forward, putting lawyer away in some kind of account set aside for that purpose, and I would hope that that would be taken up and considered by the council, by the first electman, and by the board of finance, because to me, that is something, even with a baby step, that we could, you know, start doing with the knowledge that they, you know, provided in the report. So, I hope that that won't just go into a time.
Mr. O'Hara?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Speaking sideways.
Pat O'Hara, so I hopefully am just making some concluding comments here. Just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been working with all of the members of the volunteer fire services of the town of Monroe. I've learned a lot over the last fourteen, eighteen months, whatever it is. Mike Tucker in ESCI has been very professional, very helpful to what I've learned, his work, I think, with the departments, to see them working together. I think that's been very beneficial. In terms of moving forward, I'm going to echo with Chief, Chief Klemish, you know, there are some things that are baby steps, there are some things that are probably no-brainer. But at the end of the day, the, the most important thing I feel that comes out of this study is that there are going to be tools in this toolbox for the town of Monroe to continue to have a volunteer fire service. I think that's what I heard from the council, the firemen, and the people of the town of Monroe who were involved in this process. And there are going to be some challenges, but I think at the end of the day, what we're asking for is, how do we keep volunteers volunteering? How do we give them that ability and those tools to keep doing their job? And it's a job they love, and, you know, again, the most, the brightest thing I see out of this study is that our volunteer firemen and our volunteer firewomen are doing an outstanding job for the people of town of Monroe. It now becomes your job to make sure that they can continue to do their job. So, with that, please fire me.
Thank you for your hard work, Mr. O'Hara. Any other comments, anybody?
I just want to look this on record, thanking Mr. Tucker and ESCI. It was a pleasure working with them, and I think I've heard nothing but good things from the folks that you've interacted with, and I think we're pleased with the product. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, two comments. I don't think we paid enough attention initially to talk about ESCI's background and how we chose, it is a phenomenal background, and your experience is obviously proof in the pudding with the final report. Secondary issue, which I wasn't aware of, but, you know, I also like to give kudos to Kent, after pulling this together, you know, if it's been talked about for so many years, but we never pulled together a plan, just this far is outstanding to be able to get us a roadmap to get us to where we need to be. Kudos to everybody serving the committee and yourself for pulling this together. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on, thank you very much, safe travels.
Thank you.
Enjoy the sun.
Sun, it's snowing down there.
All right, we have no appointments this evening. The action items, A, we have finance, education, health, and public safety, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have not met, but after this recent display, we know we have a meeting coming up shortly, I'll look to do it probably after the holidays, first or second week of January.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Planning and zoning, public works, parks and recreation, Ms. Lappelus?
Yes, first of all, maybe, you know, maybe you don't know, Tony Scott resigned from the Park and Rec Commission, and then in terms of planning and zoning, something that we once discussed, which is now starting to become a possibility, the Stevenson lumber, a potential purchaser of the property, came before the commission to discuss a change in zone for the property. Potential purchaser discussed the possibility of creating a new mixed-use economic district. The mixed-use economic district could be unique to the town and could potentially allow property zoned as such to have recreation, outdoor storage, contract, agriculture, energy generation, all in one particular area. So, I thought that was extremely interesting and should be reported to you.
Good. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ellen A., Mr. Reed?
We did meet tonight, and we addressed the topics that came up prior in this meeting.
Strategic planning, Mr. Condon?
We did not meet since last meeting, but the minutes from our previous meeting are in your packet, so we authorized some payment of architectural bills.
EMS, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Lito, we did meet on the twenty-seventh. As council knows, we chose the King Seaton Humes to do the work of the architectural and design of that structure. We did meet and discuss how we're going to move forward in regards to either a general contractor or construction manager, so we have to speak a little bit more about that tomorrow night, we're meeting again.
Thank you. F is the Fire Services Study Committee. Mr. Kellogg, were you able to determine, I did not have the opportunity to conduct research, whether that was a council-oriented...
I, I did not have an opportunity to confirm, and my recollection is it was created by Mr. Fabrik, and then just reported to this council.
I'll tell you what we're going to do, I'm just going to ask for a vote to formally disband that this committee should, should you find out otherwise, and if not, then do whatever you, whatever you would like.
Right, yeah. I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay, motion by Ms. Lappelus, this is her second, second by Mr. Condon, all those in favor? All right, that motion carries eight to zero, so... All right, that motion carries eight to zero. So you have all the tools now, Mr. Kellogg. And with that, G is your update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a written copy that may or may not have some coffee on it, thanks to council member Condon.
No sugar, just caffeine.
Slight mishap here, sorry. Just a quick, couple of quick updates in all seriousness. Two updates on state projects. One is we were, we kind of got a hasty notice that a project on Route thirty-four was actually going to begin. They've actually started the preliminary layout of this area. This is on thirty-four. Fire is to the bridge in Stevenson. It is right in the area of the Lake Zor Drive-In. This is work on a bridge. It's actually a box culvert. It just allows water to go under through it, but it's technically a bridge. They will be doing work there that is expected to last through June of next year. The biggest impact is that the contractor will be allowed to maintain ongoing alternating one-way traffic in that area, which will be controlled by a temporary traffic light during that time period. So obviously, that, I expect to probably be in place by the end of this week, if not early next week. And obviously, we will continue to monitor that through our local police department in terms of any impacts in regards to congestion. But it will, will be an ongoing effort there for several months. The other one, Route twenty-five project, and when the contractor will do its next shutdown, weekend shutdown. We did get confirmation that they will not do any closures for the rest of the year. There may be one in January, but it is highly unlikely. It's very weather-dependent. Their most likely scenario is sometime in March. And we will continue to communicate as we hear. And the one, I wanted to just comment on Ms. Lepalas's report on planning and zoning. The concept of a new zone that might be utilized in that area of a mixed-use economic development zone or district is something that actually our new town planner has, it was a concept that he came up with in conversations with the applicant. And then they did, and then he then requested that they present that in a non-binding general planning meeting to the commission to get their overall input. The commission's subcommittee on regulations actually met about it this evening. So they'll continue those conversations. But I think it's a phenomenal step in the right direction. And we appear to have, you know, some good interest in development of that property with that kind of concept. So just clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. We are going to move on. We have no unfinished business. We've already accomplished A, B, and C on new business. We're going to move on to, we have two agreements this evening. The first one is D, is the tentative agreement between the town of Monroe and Monroe Chapter one-three-six dash one, Local one-thirty-six, International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers, AFL, CIO, and CLC, otherwise known as the clerical union. Ms. Lepalas?
Resolved that the town of Monroe accepts the tentative agreement by and between Monroe Chapter one-thirty-six dash one, Local one-thirty-six, International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers, AFL dash CIO, and CLC, as presented and authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, to execute and deliver any such documents to implement the terms thereof.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas by way of resolution, second by Mr. Condon. We had a non-meeting about this agreement this evening and a healthy discussion therein. If there's no further discussion, which I don't anticipate, I'll call for a vote on this agreement. All those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to E is the tentative agreement between the town of Monroe and UE Local two-two-two, CILU, CIPU, Sublocal CILU number forty-four, affiliated with the United Electrical, Radio, and Machine Workers of America, UE, otherwise known as the Highway Union. Ms. Lepalas is our motion.
Resolved that the town of Monroe accepts the tentative agreement by and between UE Local two-two-two, CILU dash CIPU, Sublocal CILU number forty-four, affiliated with the United Electrical, Radio, and Machine Workers of America, UE, as presented and authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, to execute and deliver any such documents to implement the terms thereof.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas is there second. Second by Mr. Reed. Again, discussed in a non-meeting this evening prior to council. I don't anticipate any discussion, but the floor is open. All right, same, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Against, the motion carries eight to zero. The last item on the agenda is our proposed meeting schedule for two thousand and nineteen. I would just like to propose two amendments to it. The Monday, July eighth, two thousand and nineteen meeting, I'd like to move to July fifteenth, absent objection, although no one can predict what may happen in July two thousand and nineteen.
If that is moved, it is likely that I will be unavailable on that date. That is the time that we are currently planning for our honeymoon.
Well, I think you can change that. What's a honeymoon?
Yeah, make the call.
Congratulations and...
Call it in.
Do you expect to stay on the council?
You can call it in, Jason.
What's the wedding date?
In April, actually.
Oh, come on. Did you be April and then right after you're going on honeymoon? That's what I did. Sorry.
Times were just...
I was just going to say, times were jaded.
And the August twelfth meeting, I'd like to move to August twenty-sixth, absent objection. All right. So with those two changes, any further comments?
I have a question. What were the two dates for your...
July fifteen and August twenty-sixth.
That's from the sixth and the twelfth.
Is there a motion to approve as amended? Motion by Ms. Lepalas is there second? Anybody want to second it? Mr. Reed, thank you very much. Like I was an auctioneer. Any discussion regarding the proposed motion? I'd see all those in favor. And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Obviously, we'd like to change it at any point we can. Second, public participation, Mr. Kirsch?
Steve Kirsch, thirty-five, up to your plane. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, I'd like to ask the first electman if he has any update on the road study that he brought before the, our local road study that came before you all a couple of months ago.
In light of our extremely odd meeting this evening and not following any of our protocols, I'm happy to defer to the selectman if he'd like to answer that question.
My understanding is that the analysis is underway, that they've already begun surveying various roads. They're in the process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Mr. Noster, come on up. Yeah, you can do it right from there, absolutely.
The two thousand and nineteen meeting schedule, when and where will it be?
It will be online probably by tomorrow. I don't know, Mr. Kellogg.
I'm not sure about, I mean, the, let me put it this way. We will, I, sometime this week, we will make sure the town clerk has the final memo. It'll be corrected dates, so it'll...
I can give you mine with my handwriting on it if you'd like. Seriously.
I took it back.
Oh, you did?
You know what? You'll have it, Lee, you'll have it by Wednesday for me.
Sure, it will be. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to close. Second, public participation, motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Mr. Reed, second by Ms. Lepalas. All those in favor? Thank you very much.